Seven o'clock and we'll call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order its December 2nd, 2020. Due to the increasing concern surrounding the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting will remain closed to the public. There are no scheduled public hearings and there will be no public comment period. Live video and audio of the meeting will be aired on Comcast Local Channel 9. A recording of the meeting will also be posted on the West Bridgewater YouTube channel. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Attention, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so first up is the police sergeant promotion interviews and we have Vic Flaherty with us.
Good evening.
Good evening, Vic.
So would you like me to just make my statement here on the recommendation?
David, do you have anything to start off with or can we move right to Vic?
Yeah, we can move to Vic. I just, normally we interview, but with COVID-19 being a digital, virtual reality, it's a little bit more cumbersome that way. And the chief is going to make the recommendation. They vet all the applicants and we follow a civil service process. So Vic, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I'm just going to do very short and sweet here. First off, we're very fortunate to have such a strong and dedicated group of individuals that were eligible for this promotion. All the eligible candidates, Sean Deville, Timothy Pope, Gerard Julian Suarez, possess personal qualities that make our police department better, stronger, more professional. Although tonight only one candidate will be recommended and promoted, I know this will not be the last time that these officers will be considered for the future promotions. Just to let everybody know, all three are in my office. They wanted to be here. With that being said, tonight I recommend to the board to appoint Sean Deville to the position of sergeant. Detective Deville has been a member of the West Bridgewater Police Department for approximately 10 years. During that time Detective Deville has held several positions within the police department. SWAT officer, semi-automatic regional vice of response member, field training officer, court prosecutor, detective. More importantly, I'd like to inform the board the fact that Detective Deville has always been the person to step up, when asked, or more importantly, when not asked. Detective Deville has just been a strong advocate for many new programs, ideas, and spearheaded some of those programs. So Detective Deville, would be my recommendation, and again, I just want to thank the board for continued support here at the police department. And that's my short little recommendation.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'll be willing to take them.
Any questions, Anthony?
No questions.
No, I think my understanding is Sean was the top of the civil list of the three. Is that correct?
Yep, the civil service exam goes by numbers, so with one position open, you go to the top three members of that exam that have passed. And Sean Deville was the number one highest grade on the exam.
So at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to promote Sean Deville to police sergeant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. So congratulations, Sean.
Congrats.
Do you want to get in front here for a minute?
Okay.
Yep.
Both helped everybody doing.
Good. Good evening, Sean. Congratulations.
Aye. Nice to see everybody.
Good to see you, Sean. Congratulations on your newborn as well.
Thank you for having the opportunity. I can only imagine how much work goes into this stuff behind the scenes and with COVID and everything else going on. I appreciate even being in this position to be considered for this promotion, so thank you.
Happy to have you and wish you the very best.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
And Tim.
Do you have any questions for me or could we?
No, I don't think we have any questions. And Tim and, something happened. We just kind of... Did we lose Vic? No, Vic's still there. Is Tim and Gerard there with you?
They are, yeah, they are. We're all here.
Maybe we can say hi. Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good to see you. And thank you for coming tonight to support Sean. Appreciate that. I'm sure he does as well.
Our pleasure. We was important to be here, so we want to be here for him.
It's great teamwork. We appreciate everything you do. Thank you very much. Have a good night, guys.
Thanks, folks. Always good to see you. Thank you again.
You're welcome. Take care.
Take care.
That was really great. They went in as well to support him. That's good to see, Vic. You have a good team.
Yeah, no, it just shows the professionalism here at the department.
That's awesome. I love seeing a teamwork.
You know, fortunately, you know, it's not a position that's open for everybody at this time, but like I said earlier, these individuals, you'll be in front of you again, so this won't be the last time.
Good. Well, have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we can move on to Lawrence Board of Selectmen Business. Is Michelle Dubois signed on?
I don't believe she's here. We had communicated to her. We thought it would take about till about 7:30, but we asked her to come on about 7:15.
Okay.
So it's about 7:08, so it's still a little bit early.
Okay.
So if you would like, we can...
Is there somebody who wants to come in?
Somebody wants to leave. Oh.
Should we move on to approving the meeting minutes?
Sure.
David, is it?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of November 4th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept the meeting minutes of November 18.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have the annual liquor license renewals to vote on?
Yep. So the board does this every single year. These are all of the liquor licenses, both on premise and off premise. They are renewed every year effective for January 1. Lorna does all the paperwork, she does really, she does an excellent job. And so I would ask that you approve all of the renewals as presented and just please make the votes subject to final inspections and any final documentation that Lorna wanted.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Want to move on to the ABCC seasonal population increase estimation?
Yeah, so ABCC is the state regulatory authority in reference to alcohol. Alcohol in Massachusetts is regulated through a quota system which is based on population. So every single year, a municipality through its town clerk's office does an annual census. Our number this year is 7538. That will be passed along to ABCC, of which they determine our quota for alcohol. They've come out. And as a result, I just asked you to take a motion to approve the form and I believe you signed the form and it goes over to ABCC.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. But we discuss and vote on future in-person Board of Selectmen meetings.
Did you need to skip that?
Yeah, I thought we'd skip that one because that might go a little longer, so I figured if we could jump and do the ones that are probably fairly quick for discussion. Okay, so we talked about this at our last meeting and decided to think about it a little bit and take a vote on it at this meeting.
I think last time I was the only one in favor of having in-person open to public meetings. I think that with the spikes that we've seen in the past two weeks, that it makes sense to continue as we're doing now.
All right.
I would like to see us go remote. I would like to be remote. Are we talking about this meeting?
So we're, yes, what we were originally talking about at the last meeting was opening it up to some part of the public in some way. But as Anthony mentioned, it's a completely different set of circumstances from two weeks ago even. So I would be in favor of continuing this form, keep it closed to the public and us doing it remotely.
And any one of us could do it at home if we wanted.
You could do, yeah, you can do it at home at any time.
I would be more comfortable, definitely, doing it from home. With the numbers going up, I think we should be leading by example. And I think, at least for me, I would feel more comfortable being at home. I have a lot of people relying on me at work. I have a lot of people relying on me at home. I just can't take that chance.
Okay, that's fine. I'll probably still come in here. It's just easier for me. And Anthony, that's totally up to you what you want to do. But as far as we'll continue with this remote process, meaning that it'll be, continue to be closed to the public.
Yeah, I think maybe the second meeting in January revisit it for budget, if we want to make changes for budget season.
Put that on the agenda, David. David, Lorna, and I were talking about maybe some possible ways to include the opportunity for the public to join it. We talked about a conference call. That could become very hectic and difficult to control in the sense of who's talking next, who's talking at all. So one of the things we talked about, and I'll mention it tonight, now that anyone listening in, when we do get to the part about Scotland Street, I think that specifically might be a topic residents are interested in, maybe more so than the others. They could send an email to Lorna and she could ask the question, let them know who it is and what their question is. So, you know, open that up a little bit tonight. We'll see what happens with it. Lorna's email address is LCarol, that's C-A-R-R-O-L-L, two Rs, two Ls, at westbridgewater.com.
Or W-Bridgewater.
W, oh, sorry. Start again. LCarol, so it's two Rs, two Ls, C-A-R-R-O-L-L, at W-Bridgewater.com. Thank you.
No problem.
We didn't need to take a vote on the remote, continuing remotely, right? That's not something that requires a vote, okay?
Before we move off that topic,
Sure.
I know we had briefly talked about maybe moving the hours up. I know that since we're currently in a, we have a curfew of 9:30, maybe we should start at 6:30? I just thought I'd bring it up for a topic.
I'm fine with that.
We don't have to vote on that, do we?
No, if you guys are good, then I'll just, I'll start doing 6:30 until you tell me otherwise.
Okay, sounds good. So it's 7:14. I don't think we have anyone else joining the call yet, Lorna? Yes? Jen Carlson's just joined. Hi, Jen.
Next. She's on mute.
Hi, y'all. Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you. How are you?
I'm so great. How are you?
Good.
Are you hiding in the car? Busted.
I just gave some trophies. I didn't get out the car yet. My groceries have been delivered into my house.
We are waiting for Michelle Dubois to join the call because your topic and what she is here to join in on conversation are sort of blend together. So it makes more sense to discuss everything at once. She's not joined the call yet. She should be any moment now.
I'm going to shoot her.
Do you want to go into your house and warm up and?
Oh, no. It's probably hotter here.
Okay.
Denise, if it's helpful, she had three requests, was represented heavy commercial, which does blend in with what Michelle is here for.
Right.
If you want to discuss the speed limit and the additional signage, if you would like to do that now, we can. Now we can do it later. Good choice.
Well, how about if we jump to the senior tax work-off 2020 statistics? Because that will be quick as well. So you want to give us the numbers on that, David?
Yep, so the senior tax work-off program is for seniors who are taking advantage of being able to work so many hours and receive a discount on their tax, on their property tax. We had a total of 35 people enrolled in the program. 27 people took advantage of it. Because of COVID, the numbers were down. We normally budget $36,500 per year. $17,000, just under $17,450 was actually spent. So we do this every year. I provide the information to the board, just as an FYI, so you see it.
Any questions?
Is there a way we can, well, since we didn't spend it all, is there a way to change the amount that each person is allowed to earn? I know there's a cap of, what is it, 750?
So there's a cap of how many hours that they, I mean, there's a cap as to how much they can earn per state law.
Oh, it's state law.
And so we did increase the cap because you have to pay the minimum wage. That's the amount you must pay. And you're not actually giving them a check because you're reducing the taxes. So when I say we budget it, we do, every single year, we do an overlay account through the Board of Assessors during the budgeting process. And so this is paid for from that overlay. So that money will stay in the overlay account because in essence, this is a tax abatement to someone. Instead of an abatement because they filed an appeal on their tax bill, this is an abatement because they actually worked. So the money always stays in that account. You have a Board of Selectmen policy that we capped at, I think it was $36,500, because not for the hours per person or the how much they can make, but that way we could, imagine if you had 200 participants. And also you could be spending a couple hundred thousand dollars. But they only can, they're capped at, I believe it's 850 a year, and they get paid a minimum wage for the credit.
Right, right. So it's not, we can't for COVID purposes turn around and increase that amount. That was my thought process, but if we can't.
You know, and also due to COVID, a lot of them chose not to work.
Right, which makes sense.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is Michelle on?
Don't believe so. I sent her an email.
Well, we have Jen sitting in the car, so how about if we do go to Jen and let her talk to us a little bit about what's going on on South Elm Street, explain why she's asked me on the agenda? Jen, if you want to take it from here?
Yeah, thank you, Denise, and thank you everyone for allowing me a few minutes just to kind of speak on behalf of the residents down here off South Elm Street. So as you know, I'm Jen Cruz. I live on Two Pelts Road, which is a small side street off of South Elm Street, just past the transfer station. And so we lived down the street, the first house on the left. And our kids are, you know, obviously hybrid and doing a combination of that. But the bus stop is at the end of Pebbles and South Elm. And, you know, over the years, we've seen the increasing traffic due to Market Basket. People wanting to cut through to avoid the 106 traffic. You know, I'm not, I don't want to blame Market Basket because now I go there too. But, you know, the traffic has really increased on 106, so I think people are finding alternate routes to sort of scoot around. So, you know, South Elm Street from now is a different street than when we bought this house in 2007. Much faster, a lot more traffic. And recently, in the last year, significantly more commercial trucks, cement trucks, dump trucks, just big, huge, heavy-duty, raveling trucks. And as far as I know, the speed limit is 30 miles per hour. Those trucks on Echo are 30 miles per hour. Taken a couple of videos. I've been in the car a couple of times following them, trying to accelerate, see how fast they were going. And most of them are going over 45 miles an hour. You know, I think their mindset is it's a backcountry road. I can just fly down here. I don't see anybody outside. But, you know, it really is a neighborhood. And when those trucks are raveling down the road, you know, you can feel your house shake and think, where am I? Because are they in the house? Are they safe? Are they playing outside or in the front? Are they on their bikes? You know, I mean, I have a lot of kids and they're all different ages and they're either running around or riding bikes or, you know, walking to their friend's house, one that's driving. And it's just become a main road that we're living off of. And I think that there has something to do with limiting at least the commercial traffic that is cutting through. And I know, you know, it's frustration with waiting in line in traffic, but they shouldn't be cutting through for commercial vehicles cutting through residential neighborhoods. You know, you guys resolved or, you know, the whole town made a decision to resolve that area on Lincoln Street to industrial. Frankly, if those big kind of trucks that should be, you know, tacked along with industrial needs to go back before, then they should be traveling that route for which there is, you know, industrial abundance. Because as far as I know on South Elm Street here, this was never planned to be commercial or industrial. And I got to imagine when they built these neighborhoods, you know, they put the houses close to the street and made it want to, you know, encourage people to get to know each other and things like that. Now we changed the zoning to from residential to commercial, or at least you start allowing it commercially, you change the culture of the environment. So I think from a safety aspect and from a quality of life aspect, I think it needs to be reconsidered whether or not to change speed limits and lower them even lower than 30. Police them and also potentially prohibit commercial vehicles. Now I know there's construction happening on Scotland Street, so there will be, you know, cement trucks and all that other stuff. But I guess I don't understand why they can't travel up and down an area of road that leads down back and forth of Lincoln Street, which is commercial or industrially zoned. And why do they have to travel the South Elm Street route? So that's my, essentially what I was thinking. I also, the other thing I was finding in data, as I was getting my emotions all worked up about this, was I saw that there is some wildlife protection situation in my head in this Hockam Park area. It may qualify that when they sort of speed or go over the speed limit in those areas, there are additional penalties. And I don't know what kind of penalties, but it was just of a greater situation rather than just going over the speed limit in a wildlife protected zone. I sent you the link for that. I don't know if I'm speaking about that the right way, but I would rather just, and I know that there was an interest in putting all these houses in and we have to do that. We have to do some commercial ratings and all this other stuff. But what we don't have to do is sacrifice the quality of life in surrounding neighborhoods for that. So that's all I'm asking.
Thank you, Jen. Anthony, do you have any questions, Gritcha?
I don't have any questions. I understand it. I live on Charles Street. I see those same cement trucks all day long as well.
Yep, I live on South Elm, so I can only echo what Jen says. I see it all the time. I have to agree that she's right on point on this topic. And what can we do?
Well, one of the issues we faced when we started talking about Scotland Street, which we're moving forward as quickly as we can with, is the fact that, and David, I think, can, will explain this better than I can, David, is that you need to offer an alternative route. For if you're going to do a heavy vehicle exclusion, then you need to offer, well, you have to have a traffic study done first. Get through that criteria, then once you've done with that, and if it meets with the level that would require either a reduced speed limit or some sort of reduction in the type of traffic, then you also have to offer this alternative route. What would be the alternative route for people from South Elm? Would it be to Lincoln Street? Is that what we'd be saying? Is that we want to push the traffic from South Elm?
Well, we've applied for Scotland, right, or R. Fine. So that would solve this, right? Because there's nowhere else that these vehicles will be going. They must be going to Bridgewater.
Right. And that's what I think. I think if we're successful with Scotland Street, that in its own is going to mitigate the problem on South Elm.
Well, that would be traffic coming from Scotland to South Elm. But the traffic, you know, I will tell you, I've seen more traffic coming from 106 to South Elm to Scotland. It's actually going in that direction. I think it's Peter traffic probably going to the industrial sites down in Bridgewater and cutting through or the construction site on Scotland. So, you know, the thing is, if they're coming off the highway or coming off 24 or 106, I don't think it would, it's a significant position to see, to ask them to run Lincoln Street instead of South Elm, particularly since Lincoln Street is now zoned for that type of activity with having a very large parcel of land be industrial, right, or, you know, plan to be. I don't think we have that type of zoning on South Elm Street.
David's going to talk to that subject?
Yeah, so the good news is this. The Board of Selectmen have, last meeting, they requested a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion on Scotland Street. As part of that process, we have to petition Bridgewater. And I spoke to the town manager in Bridgewater yesterday. I know him very well. I explained the situation. We spoke at length about it. He's sensitive to it. He's going to bring it to his town council. This is what would be very helpful, Jen, is that what we are requesting is that not only will vehicles not be able to travel from Bridgewater into West Bridgewater down Scotland, is that we would be excluding traffic from anywhere in West Bridgewater traveling to Bridgewater on Scotland. So that way they can't even get to Bridgewater traveling on Scotland Street, which therefore would mitigate the traffic on both South Elm and on Lincoln. So if we get that exclusion on Scotland, then commercial traffic will not be able to go in either direction except for during the construction on Scotland Street, obviously. But other than that, I think we'd be in really, really good shape. And speaking, in speaking to the manager yesterday, he's going to bring it to the council. You know, he's a manager. He could just stop the process if he wanted to, and he didn't. He told me he would bring it to him. He was sensitive to it. He understood it. So he's going to bring it to them. Obviously, there's still a process in Bridgewater. It's not done yet, but it could have been done. He could have said, sorry, no. He didn't. So that's a good first step. And so he'll bring it to them. And look, I can't make guarantees, but Chairman raised his point, is that because we've identified an auxiliary route, which would be 104 to 24, and if Bridgewater agrees, I can't see how Mass DOT doesn't agree because the traffic's being mitigated through Bridgewater. He's agreed to it. And that's also why we asked Michelle Dubois to be involved, because she can help us log a Mass DOT at that point. But if we can get Bridgewater's approval, I think we should be able to get DOT's approval that would stop commercial traffic in both directions on Scotland. That would greatly help on South Elm Street.
And while this isn't, you know, it's not something that's going to happen overnight, Jen. It is something we all feel strongly about, so we are backing it. And maybe in the meantime, we could look at some additional signage, you know, if that would help. Because you're right, that, the traffic on that street has increased and it's not just heavy vehicle. It's also regular vehicle. What do you think about some additional signage? You know, that it's thickly settled, or I'm not sure what the appropriate signage is, whether it's children at play or some sort of notice that alerts people they need to be more aware of their surroundings when driving down South Elm?
Yeah, I think so. That would be, I think, important. So that, you know, even the speed limit's being posted. You know, because there are out-of-town, these are all out-of-town commercial trucks and stuff that are in there. And even a lot of out-of-town people who are cutting through, getting off of 24 and trying to get home to wherever they live. You know, so I think definitely anything that we can do to post the speed Um, you know, so I, I think definitely anything that we can do to post the speed limit in, on South Elm Street, on Lincoln Street, you know, in that, in this area, post the children-at-play signs, you know, where we know that there are. There's children-at-play on Pebbles Road. There's a whole bunch of kids on the street. I think, uh, five, six, seven, eight, nine kids on the street. So, um, you know, and then on South Elm Street, certainly, I think if you pull all the residents on South Elm Street, whether they have children or not, I think everybody has a situation as to why they could, you know, do without the traffic. So posting the speed limit, I think, is important. And also, you know, if there are any other type of signage that would encourage, you know, careful traveling. And the sign that should be proposed for speed limit in both direction, you know, going north or south on South Elm Street.
Is this something you could speak with Chris about?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I drove the road earlier today, and when you come off Scotland and you drive down South Elm, it is posted as thirty miles per hour, but it's too far down. Like, it's literally, it's just too far down. And I only drove in that direction. I didn't notice it was posted in the opposite way. But I absolutely agree that we can move the sign, or even add a sign. But yeah, absolutely. We could definitely talk to Chris. And Jen had asked about doing a kids-at-play near Pebble Road. And if the Board has no objection, I would ask you to take a vote. We could certainly post that as well.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to put a child, children-at-play sign at Pebbles Road in South Elm.
Second.
Second? Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you all.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think this is really helpful and beneficial. I'm glad to know that you guys are already hard at work on the Scotland Street situation. And, you know, anything else I could speak to or help in advocating in this, you know, this whole situation, please let me know. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks, Jen. Good to see you.
Nice to see you all. Take care.
Is Michelle on?
She's having some issues understanding how to join the meeting. I'm trying to communicate with her.
Okay. I think I covered everything that we, I felt would be a quick conversation. Do you, is there anything in, any topics under your report, David, that you might be able to jump into and
Yep, I can, I can.
Take advantage of a couple of minutes?
Absolutely. I can definitely do this fairly quick.
Okay.
COVID-19 update, unfortunately, as we have all heard and seen, our numbers are going up. The numbers are going up in surrounding communities around us. This past week, we have sixteen new cases in the town, which is the highest we've ever had. And so obviously, there's just more numbers. I've also placed a map, as I did last time. There's a new map of the entire United States. You'll see that Wood Island for the first time now is dark blue. And New Hampshire, Massachusetts is a shade darker. And New Hampshire now has a shade. Even New Hampshire is getting cases. So, with that said, um, just, you know, that's, that's the local update.
I'm gonna cut you off on that if you're finished. Because I see Michelle. I can't hear Michelle, but I can see Michelle.
I'm here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Get right back to you.
I'm sorry. I'm just learning this platform. I'm usually on Zoom, so I appreciate you inviting me on this.
Oh, no problem.
I feel your pain. I, I struggled with the switch.
You're off. I think you're off again, Michelle. Oh, now you're on.
Sorry.
Good, good. Thank you for joining us tonight. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much for the invitation. I'm happy to be here.
So, you know, you and I got into the conversation a little bit online about, um, what's happening on West Chestnut. And that sort of evolved into, um, you know, we have a 40B issue in West Bridgewater. We have a West Chestnut Street issue. So, I, I think it'd be good for us to have this discussion with you, and we're looking for your support in trying to find ways to mitigate some of our issues. So, the, the West Chestnut Street issue sort of, um, it, it, it has to do partly with the IMA. So I think we're gonna jump around a little bit in discussion. David has been working on an IMA for quite some time. It wasn't something that just came up because of this property, the West Meadow Development. So if, David, if you could talk to us a little bit about that.
All right. So we're talking about, um, restricting heavy traffic on Scotland Street.
Right. We're going to talk about that too. Well, we just, actually, we started talking about that, but with the resident who wanted to talk to us about South Elm Street. It all sort of enveloped together while we were waiting for you to come on the phone. So I can back up a minute, and we can go back to that topic. What's happening on West Chestnut Street is there was a 40B develop, I'm sorry. Stop a minute. On, what happened on Scotland Street is that a 40B was developed there. That brings along its own set of circumstances for the residents there.
Is it still yet? It's not built yet, right?
No, no. It's being, it's being.
Right. And how many units was it out? I can't remember. I hope it just say.
Ninety-two and three-bedroom homes, I believe? Approximately ninety?
So right now, it's permitted for eighty-nine three- and four-bedroom homes because they will be single-family homes, not rental units. We will get credit for twenty-three affordable units because that will be the number.
So that's what these residents are going to be facing soon. On top of that, with construction going on in Bridgewater, the residents on Scotland Street are experiencing a lot of heavy commercial vehicles on their road. It's diminished their ability for it to feel as if it was a safe road to have their children out in their front yard playing.
I'll get the map here. And there's the development going on now. If you're saying that the construction, if the truck traffic down Scotland Street is actually part of constructing the ninety-two homes, I don't know how you can restrict it, but I was thinking maybe people, truck traffic was using this as a cut through to get to 24 for different business, or?
So, the construction of those, so you're right. We cannot restrict that truck traffic if it has a permissible purpose for going down Scotland Street, i.e. the construction for those homes. But as I was saying, it's turned into a cut through for heavy commercial vehicles, not only to get to Bridgewater to where the industrial area is, but to also cut through to get to West Bridgewater. So, so, um, restricting heavy commercial vehicle traffic on Scotland Street wouldn't be to negate the traffic that will be going to the, um, to the site to develop that property. It's for the other purposes.
Yeah, it's a pretty windy street.
Excuse me?
It's a, it's a dark kind of windy, narrow street, uh, when you drive it at night, for sure.
Right. So, we did do a traffic study, and the traffic study shows that there is a significant increase of heavy vehicles. So based on that, we have the support to move forward. Part of that is to reach out to Bridgewater and ask them to support our endeavor to accomplish this, to restrict, uh, the heavy vehicles. David has reached out to the Bridgewater, is he a town manager?
Town manager.
Town manager, both in written form and verbally. And that is what we're working on as far as that's concerned, and I, I feel good about it. I might be premature, but I think we, we're hoping we'll be successful with that. So we would be looking for your support in that.
Oh, yeah. I mean, especially, it, well, it looks like from the average weekday volume from 2011 to 2020, uh, that David was nice enough to send me over, it seems like, you know, at least doubling or sometimes, you know, almost tripling of the number of traffic. It's, you know, when I drove it, I did see some construction in the Bridwaters. It's just wonder, I'm just wondering, is that not what you think the increase is from? Just the, or what, what development do you think is causing the increase in traffic?
No, wait. David?
Yeah. It's a development on Elm Street and Bridgewater. So as you cross from West Bridgewater into Bridgewater, there's a, there's a little river there, the town river, and a bridge. And you're immediately in Bridgewater. That area there qualified for Mass Works grant. They spent almost six million dollars. They put all new road in there, and they were able to then market that area from, from an industrial standpoint. And quite frankly, quite a few entities have taken advantage of that. So that's all brand-new industrial area in there. And there's no doubt that people, if they're looking to go north on 24, what they're doing is they're driving, traveling down Scotland, down South Elm, to 106, banging a left on the lights, taking 24, so they can take it one exit north. So we're gonna be looking to try to turn that traffic that starts in Bridgewater and keep it in Bridgewater, down 104, over to 24. I think that's a reasonable request.
Well, yeah. I mean, you guys aren't the ones that are getting that, um, the commercial rate tax revenue to fix your roads and everything else. I admit, that makes sense to me. I'll look into this some more now. Have you reached out to MassDOT on this? Isn't a state road? Is Scotland Street a state road?
So Scotland Street is a local road. So I think the
When the Board of Select, when your Board of Selectmen have the power to restrict over a certain weight? I know in Brockton, the Police Department is very strange. Though our Traffic Department has the ability to restrict over a certain rate through a bureaucratic process as laid out, but how does West Bridgewater do it?
So, we'll follow Mass DOT regulations, which is, in order to restrict traffic, you must provide an auxiliary route. Scotland Street has no turns on or off. So the auxiliary route is Route 104 to 24, which means that we need Bridgewater's approval. So at this point, we've requested approval from Bridgewater. Assuming we get approval from Bridgewater, that's where we will really need your assistance because then it goes to Mass DOT, and Mass DOT has to approve it. And two things. One is, it's a pretty lengthy process, so that sooner we can shorten that, the better. But the other is, is that I'm really hopeful that since the auxiliary route is going to be in Bridgewater, and assuming Bridgewater agrees to it, that I can't see why Mass DOT would be an impediment. I would think they would say, okay, if they're willing to take on the traffic, then why would we get in the way? So that's where it would be really helpful to have your involvement with Mass DOT.
Yeah.
I have to do whatever I can do. I actually have, I have to put in a call to Mass DOT about a couple of other projects, and I'm happy to talk about this as well. Hold on. It seems like if the traffic is from Bridgewater, it would only make sense if they would just hop on 24 in Bridgewater.
Yeah, I agree. And just to let
I don't know how quicker to, to drive all this, all these backroads.
Yeah. And Michelle, just to let you know, it has not been sent to Mass DOT yet. And the reason being is, the packet that goes to Mass DOT must include the support letter from Bridgewater. So once I receive that support letter, assuming I do, I'm hopeful, but once I receive that support letter, I will forward it to Mass DOT, but I will copy you on it, so that way you're fully involved and aware.
Right. So, so I'm just trying to get this straight. So because you're a town, there are different rules at play, like, um, like that differentiate how you create your bylaws and all this other stuff that's different than the cities. And you're saying because it's a town former government, you can't restrict your own roads as to weight without this process that includes Mass DOT and getting permission for alternative routes and all that? You don't have the authority to do that on your own?
Nope. That's not the reason. The reason being is, is because there is no turnoffs on Scotland. So the only way to push traffic out of Scotland is to push them into a town that is not within our jurisdiction. I'm gonna juxtapose that with what we recently did over the past year, is that we have a road in town River Street entirely within our boundaries, and our auxiliary route was all roads within West Bridgewater. We didn't need Bridgewater or any other municipality's approval. Therefore, we could send it directly to Mass DOT. We were able to get approval direct. Because we're looking to push it out of town, we need another municipality to authorize it.
So the traffic, is it because the traffic is coming from Bridgewater that you need their permission to set up an auxiliary route?
Well, what he was saying is, by, by restricting the heavy vehicle traffic, we would be pushing it to Bridgewater. So if we say they
But is it coming from Bridgewater? Or is it not coming? I thought it was coming from Bridgewater, going up Scotland, hooking onto Lincoln, taking a left at West Central and getting on 24?
So it could be coming from Bridgewater, but it could also be coming from West Bridgewater. It could be coming, it could be coming from Middleborough, for all we know. They could be cutting through West Bridgewater to get there. We don't, we can't definitively say it's all coming from Bridgewater, but the end result would be, we would be pushing it to Bridgewater. So we need to start with them first. And then, like David said, that part of it is already in the works. David's already reached out both verbally and in written form to Bridgewater, and we're waiting for their response. We're very hopeful they'll be acceptable to that. And then moving on to Mass DOT is really where we need your help, Michelle.
Great. I'll do whatever I can, but I'm just, so are, are we thinking that people are hopping off of 24, taking these backroads and then hopping back on potentially? Or is it, so would like Route 24 just be the ultimate route? Just stay on the highway while you're getting off? Like, why are, hey, just they're getting off to go to an industrial spot in, you know, Bridgewater or Middleborough? I guess if you hit traffic and you want to get off, is, is that what their rationale is? Or, or do you think that we need this alternate, like, West, Bridgewater route as an alternate because they're, they could get off at the exit on West Central Street, or they could get off at the exit further down? Is that what you're saying? Or, I'm just trying to understand.
The traffic study doesn't, and David, you can jump at any point. The traffic study doesn't really address the rationale of the driver. It, it's more statistics. And, you know, I can't really say where or why they're doing it, but we can certainly say that in two thousand, in just one category that the study found. In 2011, it was five point four percent heavy vehicles. In 2020, it's thirteen point four percent heavy vehicles. That's a significant increase in a resident, you know, in pretty much a residential area. So I can't really, like I said, I, I don't know if you can help me with this, Anthony? I don't think we can analyze why.
The only thing that's changed is the development of that industrial area, Bridgewater. So assume that that's the cause.
And it's the heavy
And so if you can get them to agree that they should be getting on further down 24, maybe that will alleviate at least some of the heavy, well, you're saying you're gonna restrict it, so they won't be able to go on that street at all? Or?
Yeah, look at this.
Maybe commercial vehicles of a certain weight?
There is no reason
Unless they have a reason.
Right. There is absolutely no reason why heavy vehicle commercial, um, trucks must travel through West Bridgewater if they are originating from Bridgewater or trying to access Bridgewater. Route 104, God bless you.
Bless you.
104 connects directly to Elm, and it's a short jaunt from down 104 to Route 24. So there's no reason that they should not be using 104 to Elm Street. Why they are, what their motivation is for using Scotland Street, we don't know. The traffic study does indicate there's more vehicular traffic, heavy vehicle vehicular traffic, traveling from Bridgewater than traveling into Bridgewater. So we know it's coming from Bridgewater. And so instead of them, for example, if I'm at a job site in Bridgewater, instead of traveling down Elm Street towards West Bridgewater, I travel the opposite, take a right at a set of lights, it's brand-new, it's been widened, it's easy enough for their commercial trucks to make that turn, and within a quarter of a mile, they're on 104. It's reasonable. There's no reason to travel down residential air in West Bridgewater. And that's gonna be the request.
Well, I totally understand that now, so I appreciate all the information. I'm happy to help in any way I can. That makes total sense to me. I drove it tonight right after it got dark, and, you know, I just have, I was like in a Ford, you know, SUV type thing, and it was, I mean, I can drive, so it was fine, but it was, it was kind of a tight road. And I, and then we drove down, um, oh, what's the street? It's right in the middle of Scotland. You take a right, it's where they're gonna actually put in all the, the housing access. Is that West Street? Or what was the name of that street?
That's Maple Street. Maple Street Extension.
Maple, Maple. Now, is that gonna be the access to these ninety-four houses? It looks like they, they really got a staging area. The, the dirt pile is enormous.
Yes.
Wow. Okay. And there are gonna be twenty-four more units of affordable housing there, twenty-six? And that's twenty-three? And that's gonna bring your number up? And when you're trying to get to ten percent, I mean, you're at four point five percent now?
Correct. Yeah, it, it's a mandatory ten percent.
Is it ten?
And that dovetails right into the 40B subject. And here's the funny part about And here's the funny part about affordable housing. In West Bridgewater, it's not affordable in a forty B. It, it's just not. Um, the, what is it, what is that unit called? The development down the, what, what, um-
So the apartment complex, which is next to the golf course, the Turnip River Bend, I'm sure you know, Michelle, is that if they wanna increase rents, they have to do a, a market analysis and it has to be approved by DHCD. They did that two years ago because they had not raised rents in a couple of years. So I have, the, the, the town has to be notified. So I have a copy, but I present it in the packet. Uh, the, the, a one-bedroom, do you have it, Mona?
Uh, can you see it?
I'm sorry?
Yes, yes.
What else, right?
Right.
So, the, um, you know, the one-bedroom with utilities, I think it's fifteen hundred dollars. And a two-bedroom is almost seventeen hundred dollars.
Yeah, they go for like two thousand two hundred in Brockton. It's crazy how much rents are created. Nothing's affordable.
So now you say that, you know, the, the, the whole concept of relaxing the zoning, the conservation, our bylaws, is to build affordable housing, but it's not affordable. So it, it negates the purpose of this legislation. I mean, I just made a few notes. First to think about it, this legislation was created in nineteen sixty-nine. I, I think the world's changed just a little bit since nineteen sixty-nine, but they've done nothing to enhance the forty B rules and regulations. Um, and then part of it is that the resident must make no more than eighty percent of the area median, median income. So let's say the area median income is a hundred thousand dollars. So they can make seventy-nine thousand dollars.
And I don't even think it's that. Isn't that, our area income, what's the number around here?
So the, the median income, I believe, in this area in, um, in Massachusetts? I think, I think the statistic I looked at was Massachusetts and it was like forty-six thousand, okay?
Yeah, I think someone was like fifty-six or something.
Right, so now you look at this area, okay, eighty percent? I can make eighty thousand dollars, well, seventy-nine thousand, and it's affordable. Um, West Bridgewater, we have a lot of wetland. It's not necessarily wetlands, but it's wetland. And when they build these developments, they certainly do work with our zoning and planning board and all of that. But water has to go somewhere. It, it, it has to go somewhere. And typically, it ends up in someone's basement. Um, we have the, and you know, and I know everyone says the same thing, Michelle. It's the, the impact on the infrastructure and it's the impact on the community, including our services, our police, our fire, our schools. All that, when we have to build up those services, we have to pay for that. That increases the taxes. And therefore, who does that impact? Probably the, the ones that are least able to afford it. And we've done it all in the best interest of building a forty B. It just negates it. Um, and, and then the, the other sad part of this is that it doesn't even take into account the mobile homes we already have at two parks. There's what approximately two hundred? At the two parks?
Two hundred and thirty-six.
So we have two hundred and thirty-six units at the two mobile home parks. And they're, they're very nice parks. This is, that's definitely afford, more affordable living than buying, you know, one of the cookie cutter Colonials in West Bridgewater that might be going for six, seven hundred thousand dollars or more. But they don't factor that in to our ten percent.
And they are rent-controlled.
And, and the rent, rent control too. I mean, some of these things, they just don't make sense.
Does anyone know why back in the sixties, the mobile home parks were not included?
So I can't-
Number four.
I don't think any of us were active, at least in this, in this back in the sixties.
Business, you know, like, what's the rationale behind not including it or, or, or including it?
So I can't speak to that, Michelle, but I do know that, that, um, you must know State Rep. Susan Gifford. Um, I know Ms. Gifford filed legislation last year that didn't go anywhere. But one of the pieces of legislation, I reached out to her office, I spoke to her chief of staff. Where he and he has a large number of mobile homes. So the mobile homes counts as part of our inventory stock. It's fine, it's a home. But it does not account for our affordable units, which it should, because it is actually more affordable. And so she was looking to try to amend it. And unfortunately, you know, the, the amendment wasn't brought, wasn't taken up on the floor.
I just wanna know why it's not included. Why aren't they included? I have to learn more about, I mean, before I speak to how I, it, it, how I feel if it should or it shouldn't be, I wonder what the rationale was that doesn't include them. Because I do know that, you know, you know, people live there for an affordable place to live. So I, I don't know the rationale behind why and I have to learn more about that. So if anyone has any information they wanna share with me, I'd love to get that to my, you know, email or my cellphone. And I will look into it on my end as well as to what the historic rationale was as to not include it. Because, you know, there are rental units that are in, I, I'm assuming that there are rental units in West Bridgewater that are included in your forty B, um, numbers, right? Where people don't own their rent and, right? Or because the people own the mobile parks, I don't know. It doesn't make sense to me why it wouldn't be included, so I have to learn more about that.
So at the mobile park, unless there's some exceptions, they own their unit, they rent the land.
Right, so I'm not sure why it's not included. Um, and none of you really know why they weren't included in the beginning?
No, but we don't know why they weren't included in the, we don't even know if they qualified to be included in the beginning. But what we do know is Susan Gifford correctly? Susan Gifford has tried to get a bill to the floor to include mobile homes. Now that in itself, you know, regardless of what they did in nineteen sixty-nine and didn't include it, it is what it is. But there was a bill put forth and that went nowhere.
Yeah. Well, I'll look into it some more and I'll reach out to Susan and I will ask her about that and have a conversation with Representative Gifford about that.
And one of the other things we've asked for, for three years now, was to try to get twenty-five thousand dollars to do,
Yeah.
to do a study in West Bridgewater. And actually, it would help other small communities as well of the forty B impact. I mean, again, I, I can't see how anyone could say, well, a law made in nineteen sixty-nine for affordable, uh, portable housing makes sense in twenty twenty when no one can afford the affordable housing. It, it's just, it's backwards. Someone needs to take a serious look at this and analyze it and see, is it really achieving what it was intended to do? I'd say, no, it's not. I mean, I'll tell you who is, I'll tell you who is making out on this. The developers, the developers are, are really making out on this, Michelle. And I think this was a point you were making, uh, or that you've tried to make. If anyone's progressing on a forty B, it's a developer. Because you can take a parcel of land and traditional development, you can put ten houses on it. You change it to a forty B, now you're going to go right up against the wetlands and, you know, those ten, twenty, thirty, whatever the number was, now it becomes maybe thirty or forty houses because it's forty B.
Right. Well, I, I think that the, the fight to keep or get rid of forty B, it's very difficult to take on for a single town. So, um, so as an example, this year with COVID and all the funding for COVID and the fighting for funding for COVID, um, and the budget prospects last fiscal year and coming into this fiscal year are such that earmarks are very hard to come by. And just to be candid with you, um, twenty-five thousand dollar earmark, um, I would much prefer to put toward, um, you know, a, a service in the community or school system or a playground than a study on forty B that I really think should be taken up by like Old Colony Planning Council or Planning Development Place or Town, if that's where you wanna put, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, it, I'm not saying that it's not important. I'm just saying that, um, that type of a resource, I, I, I don't know if I'd be able to get that money because there isn't really much, um, support. I'm sorry, my phone's right in the computer. You know, it's bye-bye, working in Moza, just every time it says it. So, um, there isn't really much support around getting rid of forty B um, at the State House that's like, uh, uh, like a majority. So it's hard to deliver the money or funds to, um, get rid of it. So, I mean, I'm happy to reach out to Mary Waldron, who's the head of Old Colony Planning, and ask her about it. I'm happy to work with you guys around it. Um, I, the thing is, like, I can't say that affordable housing is not affordable because it is affordable. And even if I agree with you from West Bridgewater's perspective, um, West Bridgewater is one small town and Brockton is one small city in this state. And Governor Patrick is really pushing housing. And Boston is only building housing for multimillionaires, which is displacing middle income and lower income people at such a rate. Um, he is literally subsidizing through a lot of the, um, state building programs, um, workforce housing, which is a different structured housing. And I would have to learn more about what parts of workforce housing accounts for West Bridgewater's affordable housing unit. But it's, it's focused on people making between like seventy-five and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars um, a year and they're taking like police and fire type of salaries because then the price of housing is getting out of reach for folks in that kind of service bracket as well. And so the, the, the forces are fighting like seven different development projects across West East Bridgewater and Brockton. And not that, um, we're against development, but it's the number of units that they're asking for and that Governor Patrick is, I mean, Governor Baker is requiring around this housing development. It is a real issue. Um, I'm sorry you guys are dealing with it and I'm willing to, you know, work with you on it. Um, and I guess that's where the, um, intermunicipal agreement comes up. And so for me, the housing, the housing over off of, um, in Brockton, West Chestnut, Walnut Street, Pumped in to Samuel Ave, kinda like at the top over here. Um, I don't know, like, all I know about that development is like hearsay. And people calling me on the phone, being very upset about it. And so, um, I think that if the town is negotiating an intermunicipal agreement, I'd like to know more about that because I'm very close friends with the mayor and we have meetings weekly and I haven't really heard about that, um, that much. I know that there's a developer that's trying to push it, um, who used to work for the city. And there's some, there's some, I don't know, there's a lot of pressure going on behind closed doors. So I don't, I would love more transparency around that. And I think the residents that live on that side of town would like to have more transparency about that. I know that the citizens of Brockton, it's not in my district off of West Chestnut Street, that's actually another state representative's district over there. But they're very much, um, not in agreement about, um, the development in West Bridgewater because the way it's currently set up, all the traffic would go all the way to West Chestnut Street and there wouldn't be a connection anywhere for the residents in this development to get into West Bridgewater without first entering into Brockton and then going around. And from what I'm understanding, that is being set up in some kind of shortcut. And, um, there is some negotiation that was happening that would have that development empty onto Walnut Street in West Bridgewater. And then there would be a lot less pushback from the residents on West Chestnut Street. And maybe the intermunicipal agreement would have been, would be easier. But I'm not involved in any of those negotiations. I'm happy to enter to them and to participate. And I'm, I'm very familiar with the functionings of intermunicipal agreements. Um, it helped with the intermunicipal agreement for, um, the commercial over by the Kmart Plaza that happened between Brockton and West Bridgewater. Um, it's just that usually when there's an intermunicipal agreement, um, the transparency and the openness of all the parties is there. But, but it doesn't seem to be so much now. And so if, I think what the citizens in Brockton in the West Chestnut area, West Chestnut Street area, saying anyways, is if you wanna use the city's water and sewer so you can build a whole bunch of buildings and make a lot of money, developer in your town who gets to the forty B number that it needs to get to, um, you should be able to figure out how, what you're gonna put that traffic out onto Walnut Street and not pump it all through West Chestnut. Because in a different section of my district over on the north side of Brockton, we have a similar arrangement that was set up before I became the city councillor for that area with the previous city council, Donna Daly, where she allowed, um, development in Abington that empties onto North Quincy Street. And whenever there's any type of medical call or a fire call or an accident, um, it takes the town of Abington so long to get there just because they didn't hook in the development into the West Abington specific, that actually puts people's life in jeopardy and actually puts a strain on the city's already strained resources because when it's a real urgent matter and someone's life is at stake, um, mutual aid gets called in and the city of Brockton responds quicker. And so in this development, um, the citizens of West Chestnut Street and Brockton's area is very concerned that it's not only gonna add more traffic to that street, which is already dangerous and there are fatalities there, it's also gonna put your own citizens in so much more jeopardy because when there is a critical incident there, Brockton is gonna be so much quicker to respond because there's no access route. And the only reason there isn't an access route is because people that are trying to maximize their profits, these private developers are refusing to hook into Walnut Street. So it's just, it's, it's a very strange, private background, I'm not involved negotiations. And then it's like the, the town and the city are trying to have this parallel track where they're trying to set up this intermunicipal agreement. And really, the private industry hasn't yet figured out what it's gonna do.
If I could, if I could interject just for, just for a minute, Michelle. Um, so I'll let David speak a little bit about how long this IMA has been in discussions because it, it, it's been a long, ongoing project. But the, the other part is that development on West Chestnut Street is not a forty B. So there, there is actually a blessing in disguise because it is traditional development. So it is subject to the local zoning bylaws. Um, so instead of getting, how many units are planned to go in there, David? Is that forty?
Somewhere around.
Somewhere around forty. It could be sixty if it was a forty B. So there, there-
If someone's having a heart attack in West Bridgewater, fire and ambulance have to go over onto Walnut and then drive up to West Chestnut and drive all around to get to that person. Um, you know, it's a problem. So I understand what you're saying and I'd like to hear more.
Yeah, this is what we live with and we-
What the holdup is, I think, on the city side.
We actually have a, a parcel on one oh six next to Honeydew. That is going to be three stories, uh, let's see, what is that one, David? Three-story building, twenty-four units. Each having one and a half parking spa- one and a half parking space per unit under a forty B. This is, I, this is a tiny parcel of land. You would, we can't imagine it. It's already gone through the process. Um-
How many affordable housing units do you have in the pipeline right now?
In the pipeline, I would say we have the, the Scotland Street project. I don't know how many of them. It must be about eighteen, David, eighteen to twenty houses under affordable there.
So in the pipeline right now, we have twenty-three for the one up off of Scotland Street, which is Cocheese Estates. We have fifty-four apartments, so we get credit for all fifty-four at a place called Old Bridgewater Place off of Matfield Street. Um, so that gives us a total of seventy-seven. And then in addition, beginning the permitting process at the ZBA is a twenty-four unit, um, affordable unit complex for apartments that Denise is speaking about, that is beginning at the ZBA process right now. Um, the problem with that one is it's twenty-four units on point seven acres. Um, no parking, I mean, it's, talk about unsafe. And it's right on Route one oh six.
Yeah, right, right on one oh six.
That would be one house and traditionals on that.
Yeah. If, if they, well, they couldn't even do a house because it's commercial.
Yeah.
So you couldn't even, under traditional zoning bylaws, you couldn't even put a house there because it's commercial property. But because it's forty B, not only can you put a house there, you can build a three-story building.
So-
And it, there's, there's, I mean, certainly for a working couple, that would probably be a great place to live. Um, for a senior or with a child, um, there's really nowhere for the child to play. It's not a safe area for someone to be walking, trying to cross the street, definitely not. So, but it is getting in there, but I would like David to talk a little bit about the IMA process. So, but it is getting in there. But I would like David to talk a little bit about the IMA process.
Yeah, I just, just, um, prior to even knowing that you were going to be on the agenda, I was placing this on the agenda because I was receiving feedback about this IMA that quite frankly, it's just not true. I, I, I'm amazed as to how rumors start and just spread. So first things first, we were approached, the previous chairman of the board was approached by a different resident that owns a business on Route one, uh, Route twenty-eight in West Bridgewater. He was looking to add sewer. And what's frustrating to us is that we have an IMA with Family Dollar. And Family Dollar sits on the pad of McDonald's.
Right.
So McDonald's sells it to Family Dollar, always had sewer with Brockton, paid Brockton. And then as soon as it there's a change of ownership, Brockton said, sorry, we're not gonna sell you sewer anymore without an IMA. So that's why we have an IMA. And quite frankly, it.
Well, Eldon Marara coordinated that, as I remember.
The city of Brockton required it. Family Dollar could not close without an IMA because they were refused sewer. So we.
I think that might have been a state requirement. There's some kind of intermunicipal thing that went through, um, with the, um, municipal, um, bill go back in, I wanna say two thousand and sixteen. Was it pre-two thousand and sixteen that this happened? It was right around there.
It predates that.
Yeah, right before it. Okay, I'm sorry, but come on.
That's okay. The reason being is because there was a change in administration Brockton. And they took the position, which they are correct. They took the position that if you are outside the jurisdiction and you do not pay your bill, you cannot lean them. So if Family Dollar doesn't pay their bill, their sewer bill, then Brockton cannot lean because they're outside of jurisdiction. That's factually accurate. That's a mass general law. Quite frankly, man.
But we think, that's what I'm talking about. We've, we've recently changed that through Governor, um, Charlie Baker's municipal modernization, um, municipal modernization bill that we put through in two thousand and sixteen or seventeen. Just so you know, I know that what, that's what happened back then. But now we've allowed, um, you guys to coordinate between municipalities where there's an agreement that empowers Brockton to lean through West Bridgewater, in West Bridgewater. And that's the way, I think that's the way that they envision how a city could, um, have towns hook in for residential and not just commercial. Are you familiar with this, David?
I'm very familiar with it. So, so without, without, without making, without clouding the issue. The issue is, is that there is a requirement of an IMA in order for West Bridgewater now to lean a property in West Bridgewater on behalf of Brockton if Brockton is not getting paid the sewer. We agreed to it at Family Dollar. It is administratively burdensome and quite frankly, has not worked very well. I'm not gonna get into the details. It's irrelevant at this point. We have been notified that if there is ever a change of ownership on any other parcel in West Bridgewater that currently connects to Brockton's sewer, that we will have to have an individual IMA with them as well. So that means if I have forty, fifty, sixty entities, which is about accurate, about forty, that are on Brockton's sewer, I have to have forty individual IMAs. And quite frankly, that makes no sense. I'd have to hire somebody here just to be able to administer those IMAs without the town of West Bridgewater receiving a penny. So at that time, when this other business came to us, we refused to do an IMA for those purposes. And we, instead, the board said, let's engage town council and let's get a global IMA, one IMA that anybody and everybody that wants to be able to buy sewer from Brock, Brockton can get direct billed, have direct pay. And if we need to lean them, we will lean them on their behalf. And West Bridgewater would receive a premium for its effort and its work. That seemed to be okay. There was a change in the city solicitor's office. There was a vacuum and it's taken almost two years to get to where we are now. In the process, Mr. Albany's, now that he's trying to also permit his project, recognized this IMA was being negotiated between our legal counsel and your legal counsel in his attempt to piggyback on it. Now I have no objection to that. If, if he benefits from it, he does. If he doesn't, he doesn't. This IMA pre-existed our involvement with Mr. Albany's. It has nothing to do with this project. It is to try to make a long-term beneficial agreement between two municipalities. One that needs, has excess capacity, needs the money and wants to sell it. And from a town that doesn't have any sewer capability and is looking to take care of its people. That was the intent of it.
I think the difference is, I don't know if everybody in Brockton would agree that it has excess capacity and it wants to sell it, right?
I agree, I, Michelle.
I understand where you're, where you're coming from, um, but I, it, it is a resource. And, um, you know, it is in Brockton's job to make, um, you know, Ben Altman need so much money. It just isn't.
So, I agree, Michelle, so.
I'm not saying that that's a, like, I think that, um, that's kinda clouding the issue. Um, cause I didn't realize that your IMA that you were negotiating with the city was a global one. And so would it just open up usage that the town would then dictate, um, that could be used for Brockton's water or wind sewer? Or would it be something that you guys would negotiate or would the city still negotiate it? You just wouldn't need individual IMAs. It would just be, uh, cause I always understood it would be an agreement between the city and an agreement between the town that if the city chose to give capacity to the town and if, um, the per, the user of that capacity didn't pay, the town would then lean the user and facilitate the payment through the, the town's, um, system. And I didn't realize that you would need, of course you need individual sewer hookups because that's just the way it's always been. But you're saying, um, you need individual IMAs? Individual, they, they've always been, they've always been project-specific intermunicipal agreements. So when we hooked in, um, with Stoughton, the, um, TJ Maxx, that's an intermunicipal agreement between the project that was hooking in to the city's resource. Are you saying that in the previous mayor's administration, like Mayor Carpenter, was interested in allowing so many tons of usage to West Bridgewater? And West Bridgewater would determine how it utilized access to that? Or is that different?
What I am saying is, is that the town of West Bridgewater is in active negotiations between the two legal offices to have one IMA to allow whoever is on your current system to be able to access your sewer, be direct billed from Brockton. And if there is non-payment, then West Bridgewater will then lean them. And if Brockton would like to extend more sewer into West Bridgewater, we would not have to have an individual IMA for every other entity that that IMA then would, there would be a global IMA. And we would only have one that we would have to administer. That was the intent. I know somehow, one, one second.
Yep, to the user to negotiate with the city of Brockton on if they got access to that or not? Or, because originally before the, if, the, so, there are two issues. There's the issue of being, getting permission from the city of Brockton to utilize a portion of its resource water and sewer. And then there's the issue of the town being empowered to lean property for a bill that isn't your town's bill. It's a different municipality's bill. And so there, those are the, those are the two issues I see. And the intermunicipal agreement prior to Governor Baker's municipal modernization bill passing was to allow for hooking up of, um, of city resource into the town, um, you know, residential and commercial use for you to expand your tax base. And I didn't rea- so now, so is the, if the universal intermunicipal agreement is for you guys to lean property, um, in your town that, um, is owed a bill in Brockton? I completely support. I think it should just be, um, a, a deal between the town and the city that the town agrees to do that and the city, it's up to the city if they're gonna extend the water sewer capacity. But if there's a water, sewer capacity connected to that, then I think that that would be huge, um, negotiation with the, with the city. Because the city is raising water and sewer rates at an exponential rate. Um, it is adding new user fees that it's not assessing to the town. And this is the elected body in the city doing that, causing a lot of, um, discontent among the citizens. And, um, I don't know if they'll be hot on allowing a lot of capacity without some oversight on it. So are the two connected or is it just an agreement around you're gonna lean property that the city is offering water sewer from? Because I agree with you on one point, but I don't necessarily agree if it's, if it gives you capacity for you to wheel to residential or commercial uses. Because I think that's overstepping my authority as a state rep. And it would be more for the mayor of Brockton to make those determinations.
So if I could interject for a moment, because I, I think it's, I think it's important to, for us to discuss this. Um, I'm not in favor of an IMA that encourages more development because it's accessible to Brockton's sewer and water. Uh, because that's to the detriment of West Bridgewater. Um, I am in favor though of existing parcels of land that are accessible to Brockton's sewer, getting connected to Brockton's sewer. I mean, we have the, the Shaw's Plaza. That would be, you know, that whole area being developed. And there may be parcels of land there, along there. For them to redo a septic system could cost a lot of money for some of the small businesses across the street, let's say. But they're right there. So an existing parcel of land, I wouldn't be opposed to them connecting and having the IMA. I don't know.
And I know the mobile home parks not paying Brockton water or sewer bill, I can't remember which, the tunes of hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then it not being able legally to be leaned because West Bridgewater wasn't providing the water and sewer. It was Brockton providing the water and sewer. I don't even know where that stands, but I know that a lawsuit ensued. And some of the folks living in that, um, that mobile home park had diminished quality of life uh, because there was such a huge unpaid debt that then they had to burden. Um, and maybe, you know, I don't know all the details, so maybe it was justified or not justified. But I know not the town. I remember talking to the assessor, if I remember correctly. And, um, that's a big part, I think, the reason that Governor Baker included this ability for municipalities to agree to allow one municipality to lean for the other municipality's service because West Bridgewater was not able to lean one of the mobile home parks for an unpaid water sewer bill that was due to Brockton. Is there something like that wrapped up in all this, David? Or is that not, um, connected to what we're talking about with your IMA right now? Is, is there something going on there that's making the city more hesitant? I'm, I'm not, I'm just wondering. I'm trying to wonder why the city wouldn't just say, yeah, we're supplying water sewer. We want to empower you to be able to lean those properties if they're not paying our debt. I don't, I'm not quite understanding why the city wouldn't agree to that. Cause there would be a win-win for them to get the money.
So it just, it wasn't watering sewer at, at the mobile home park. If I remember correctly, water comes from West Bridgewater, sewer is serviced by Brockton. It's a split.
It was the sewer that was, was one of them that was unpaid and the, and the town wasn't, wasn't leaning property.
So the other thing that happened with that is that he, if I remember correctly, he had a huge catch-up bill. It wasn't just a one-year, you know, rolling over and not being paid. I think he also had a very significant catch-up bill at the park.
And I think there was some issue with maybe the water meter being off. I, I mean, this was a big fiasco. And I'm not saying it's the owner's, um, responsibility. But there were many layers to that. And I'm just wondering if that's, because on the face of it, it doesn't make any sense for Brockton to be giving West Bridgewater a holdup around, um, an agreement that it, that says Brockton empowers West Bridgewater to lean, uh, for unpaid water and sewer resources coming from the city. Because it's only to the city's benefit that we get the payment for that. So I'm not, I'm not understanding the holdup, but I have a very good relationship with, um, the mayor of Brockton. I have a meeting tomorrow about, um, development on the old Cristo spot on Crescent Street, um, which is another headache. Um, and then there's the whole Thacker Street development and the idea that somebody wants to put a crematorium there and burn people twenty-four hours a day. That's gonna be no fun for West Bridgewater either. There's just a lot of noxious things going on. So I will bring up the IMA tomorrow on my call and see if I can figure out from the city's perspective, why they're giving you the runaround, David.
So it's, it's not that easy.
Can I just say, nobody has said the city of Brockton's giving anyone the runaround. I've never said that.
And I'm not understanding the problem.
There is no problem. It was a disclosure to the board that we are getting close on IMA that says three things. One, is that the sewer is going to be supplied from Brockton in direct billed to the resident or commercial entity. Two, they will pay Brockton directly. And three, if they are not paid, this town of West Bridgewater will lean that entity on behalf of Brockton and receive a payment from Brockton for, um, for exercising that right. That is all the IMA says. What, the reason I placed it on the agenda was because I was receiving feedback that somehow this global IMA that has been kicking around for a couple of years now has somehow been specific to one development that is absolutely erroneous. It's just false. And so that was the FYI to the board.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure. I know that that development would need some sort of an intermunicipal agreement to tie in or some kind of agreement, right? But that, that's a different agreement than, than what you're talking about.
And when this, when Mr. Al. When Mr. Albany's approached us over a year ago saying, we understand that you're trying to do an IMA. We would like to have an individual IMA. I told him, no. We do not do individual IMAs. We are working on a global IMA. If he participates, great. If he doesn't participate, so be it. That was not my motivation. That was not the town's motivation. And nobody from the city of Brockton, quite frankly, has told me that there's any pushback. It's just unfortunate that.
Is your capacity being involved in the IMA or no?
It's not, it's not even discussed.
Okay.
But, but I think this, since this subject came up, um, I would like to discuss a little bit about, you know, the impacts to West Bridgewater. And, you know, as I said, I think an existing parcel of land, it would be a good opportunity for the landowner. I'm not so sure on an ongoing basis, it's a good opportunity for West Bridgewater.
But, I mean, why wouldn't it be? What do we care if they're getting sewer from Brockton or if they're putting in thirty septic systems?
Because to develop and get sewer from Brockton, I think is less expensive and more attractive than building thirty septic systems. You'd need more land to develop thirty septic systems.
You still need thirty thousand square feet, no matter what. If we're talking traditional residential, if we're talking this project. No matter what, you need thirteen thousand, thirty thousand square feet a lot. And that's plenty of room for a septic like every other development.
But on your thirty thousand square foot.
If he makes more money, good for him.
But on your thirty thousand square foot lot, you can either end up with a nice flat piece of land because your sewer pipes are running out under it, or you'll end up with the home, the big hill in your backyard. So more of your land becomes attractive and useful with town sewer, city sewer than it does with the septic system.
Would it be cheaper to tie into the sewer than to put in a septic system?
Most likely. For this, in this instance, yes. Depending on the exact location, it varies.
But you would, it would be much more, in my opinion, if I was going to develop a forty B and I could tie into Brockton's water, uh, septic system, that's an attractive piece of land. And if we have a global IMA, that would include new development.
See, this is where we're talking past each other. So there's an intermunicipal agreement in a traditional sense, like the, the dollar store, the Save-A-Bot that got, or some, some of the, um, industry on Manly Street that have intermunicipal agreements with the city to get a certain amount of capacity. So then there's an agreement that was required by Governor, um, Baker's municipal modernization bill that we passed that allows, before, I guess it wasn't allowed, that allows an agreement to be struck between two municipalities that empowers one municipality to lean in its borders for a debt owed to the adjacent or the connected municipalities. for a debt owed to the adjacent or the connected municipality for, for wastewater sewer. Then our previous mayor allowed the town of Abington a certain amount of capacity and didn't ask for what they were gonna use the capacity for, so they could use it for whatever the town decided they could use it for. So I'm just trying to get to what a municipal, municipal, intermunicipal agreement we're trying to talk about. So if the town of West Bridgewater is trying to structure an intermunicipal agreement with Brockton that says, we want Brockton to give the town of West Bridgewater, I, I mean, I'm just throwing out a number there, 100,000 cu, 100 cubic, 1,000 cubic loads of capacity for wastewater, 1,000 cubic gallons of water a day. And then it'll be up to the town of West Bridgewater how it doles that out. Is that the type of intermunicipal agreement? Or is this just the intermunicipal agreement that's gonna allow West Bridgewater to lean within your borders for capacity that Brockton has granted already? Or are they, or are they combined? Because I'm, I'm just, so like, I understand where, where you guys are coming from. I'm just trying to understand what, what the legal negotiation is with the city. And I don't understand what.
Okay, David's going to elaborate on that.
So there is no capacity discussion in the IMA. There's been no capacity discussion for me to anyone in the city. And to my knowledge, there's been no capacity discussion at all between our town council and your city solicitor. Capacity is not even a discussion point. All I, all I cared about was that if somebody has Brockton sewer, that instead of having multiple IMAs, that I would have one global IMA that would empower Brockton to direct build the end user, the end user to direct pay the city of Brockton. And if there is payment not made, that the town of West Bridgewater will lean and receive a premium for its efforts. That is the only thing that is being said in this IMA. And I will say, because I just, I don't want to miss this point, that everybody that we have worked with in Brockton on this have been excellent. I don't know what they feel, I don't know what they think. All I know is I received no pushback, we're just working through the details and just to try to get the IMA done.
From a bureaucratic standpoint, it helps Brockton. It helps Brockton to have West Bridgewater be able to do this, so we can get payment without having to go to the courts and using a more traditional mechanism to get the payment for that service. So yeah, I, I, I'm not exactly sure if there was some controversy brought to your attention. So then, wouldn't, so if Mr. Albany's was able to hook into Brockton Water and Sewer, which he may be able to do, I'm, I'm not involved in that either. But if he was able to hook in and you had already negotiated this intermunicipal agreement, he would automatically be a part of that, because obviously, hopefully, the residents of the houses he built would pay water and sewer and everything will be fine. But you, you're negotiating globally for any user in your town. And if they're, they're gonna get direct billed, and if they don't pay their bill, then the town will facilitate the leaning.
It's negotiating a process. It's, it's a, it's a process, David. I can't, if I had to bring it down to its simplest context, would you agree, it's a process?
Yes, so, so at the end of the day, exactly what you said, Michelle, I would agree with. We are looking at a global IMA, it has nothing to do with capacity. If Mr. Albany's wants to take advantage and be a beneficiary of it, then according to the way we've begin, we've envisioned this IMA, the answer would be yes. I think what the chairman is saying is, is that she would like to limit the IMA, which is a discussion we'll have to have, and then I would bring to my town council to bring to your city solicitor. And that'll have to be, you know, those details will have to get ironed out. My only, there is, there is no, there's no challenge, except that I just want to be clear that this was a global IMA, has nothing to do with capacity, and it is not specific to any one development.
So if you're, and that's good, so you're doing that. But then there are, there are, there are discussions in Brockton going on about a development in West Bridgewater that is also seeking a different intermunicipal agreement. I believe, or maybe I'm using, maybe determine, they're calling it an intermunicipal agreement on their resolve that they filed in, in their city government, the city of Brockton, to discuss. And they called it an intermunicipal agreement in their writings of their resolve that says they wanted to support and discuss through a resolve, which is non-binding, a conversation before the city council of Brockton and the city finance committee of Brockton to issue an agreement that would allow for the tie-in of the folks that own the land off of West Chestnut Street to have water and sewer. They called it an intermunicipal agreement in their resolve. They're two separate things. So I'm, I'm wondering if, if what the five city councillors filed in Brockton is causing you guys a bit of a headache in West Bridgewater because the folks there are thinking that your intermunicipal agreement that the town's legal council and the city's legal council are negotiating around a bureaucratic process of billing is the same as the intermunicipal agreement that the five city councillors want the mayor of Brockton to allow to have a whole bunch of development in West Bridgewater. But is that, is that caused you an issue? Is that why you bring this up? Because the city councillors filed that? And I think that, you know, the town folks in West Bridgewater are concerned if they're the same thing? Because that is happening. I mean, I didn't file the resolve. There's a discussion happening in Brockton and some pressure being brought by the developers to get the city of Brockton to allow for water sewer capacity, so they can develop. I don't know how many units. Again, I don't have the power, I'm not the mayor of Brockton, I'm not a city councillor anymore in Brockton. I don't have the power to give that capacity up. But if the city is talking to Mr. Albany's about issuing water sewer capacity, there's nothing wrong with that. But if the water sewer capacity is going to be used to develop a whole bunch of units in West Bridgewater, I think the citizens of West Bridgewater should at least know that that conversation is happening right over the border. And that should spur their interest to reach out to their selectmen and their planning and their town and say exactly how many units is, is the developer proposing. We should get ahead of this and not wait for, you know, him to negotiate with the city for a certain amount of capacity and then come to the town and say.
So I'm, I'm gonna enter, I hate to be rude, Michelle, but we're on a tight schedule. We have an executive session tonight. But just to kind of close the loop on this, I think this has been, this whole issue has been in the newspaper for at least three years now. So I think most of the folks are, are pretty aware it's going on. It, it's been a huge issue for the Ash Street residents and for the West Chestnut Street residents. So it's pretty, it's pretty much out there. We appreciate your time, glad you could join us. David, if you had any closing comments?
I cannot.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And then, and we'll talk to you again soon. Do you think as a subject, we need a schedule for another time to bring this?
No, we'll discuss.
Well, I will report back to you on it, my mast dot as well as, you know, whatever else I learn. I have this call tomorrow, so I'm happy to do that.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, I have one more.
Thank you, good night.
So I guess I'm just looking for direction from the board. We were looking at a global IMA that was going to include anybody. If Brockton authorized sewer for person A, you don't have to get an individual IMA. That was the only intent.
Right.
We don't control what Brockton decides to do, we weren't making any effort to do that. It sounds like though, from what you're saying, is that you would like to not allow it open up for new development, but only for existing parcels. And the reason that's important is because the change that Brockton made, and Family Dollar is an example of this, is that when there was a change of ownership, they required an IMA. We know entities are going to sell. People are gonna sell their homes, I mean, world will change, it was gonna happen. And we don't, as, as a town, I didn't think it was in the best interest of the town to have dozens of individual IMAs. So we just wanted to have one. So I guess I thought it was gonna be one IMA, if you have an existing parcel, new parcel, Brockton decides to sell you sewer, you want it, you fall into this category. What I'm hearing tonight is, is that you're thinking that maybe we should exclude new development and only do it on existing. And if I'm hearing that, Mark, I apologize.
No, you're, you're hearing me correct.
But if that is what I'm hearing, I just need direction from the board, because I need to go to legal counsel and say, it can't be global for all parcels, it has to only be limited to this. If that's the choice of the board, I just need direction.
I mean, like, again, my input would be, yes, a global IMA, limited to existing parcels of property. That way, any of the commercial property along that 28 corridor, or, or even if it was a, you know, if there is a house that's currently on, you know, could be, could be connected, then I'm okay with that. You know, if someone lives on, let's say someone lives on Route 28, I mean, and their septic's failing. But they could tie into Brockton for less money. I would be okay with that, because it's an existing parcel. I would be okay with any business that's an existing parcel. What I'm not okay with is new development coming in. And the new development coming in and hooking into Brockton's septic and not being part of the IMA.
Yeah, when you say tie-in, I think I just maybe don't necessarily understand the terms. So when you say tie-in for that one parcel, does that mean there's literally just one tie-in? And my thought process behind the question is, what if, you know, someone owning a piece of property there decides, you know what, I'm gonna, you know, lower the building and put up a new one and make it, I don't know, 50 apartments or something?
Right.
Could they do that?
So we, I mean, that's a great question and, and good that you brought it up for discussion. Because that, then now we're exploring, okay, what about expansion?
You'd want to add no alterations or whatever.
Right, right.
Should we have it say literally one tie-in per parcel as of this date? These, because you can always take parcels and merge them together. You could just say, you know, the, the land, the borders as of this date, that's it. Those, those, maybe those that are, are, are already tied in? Instead of allowing people who are already along the route but hadn't tied in?
But the only, so if, if they're already tied in, you have the IMA, then your only issue is Brockton saying, now I need a new IMA. But you might also have a business or homeowner along there whose septic is failing. And versus spending $30,000 for a new septic system or more, they may be able to spend five and hook into Brockton if Brockton's amicable with it. So I wanna, you know, try to help out the people. And we had this happen to us at a house, where, not in West Bridgewater, because we didn't have the opportunity, but in Brockton, and it had septic. And it was going to cost us 20-something thousand dollars to put a new septic system. But sewer pipe ran right on front of our house, under the road. So instead, it cost us, I think, $650.
Oh, wow.
In, oh, just back in 1985.
That's a big difference.
But, you know, when you're a young couple and, you know, you've just bought a new house and you have a failed septic system, it, it mean it passed to buy it. But it was a huge difference. So that, my same trend of thought is going for the businesses and the residents that are accessible to Brockton's sewer that may be, may have septic issues. You know, this would be a gesture to them.
In this last conversation we were just having with Michelle, she was talking about these being Brockton's resources. Do we have to be concerned that at some point Brockton says, you know what, we're not supplying to anyone outside our borders? I mean, can they turn around and change their mind and not provide the sewer service to these people that are tied in?
That would, I don't think that would be very.
Yeah, that wouldn't be good.
No, it wouldn't be good, but I, I don't know how you could do something like that. That would be a public safety issue if you told someone, you can't flush your toilet, because if you have city sewer, it's gonna go somewhere.
But if you look at it from a business point of view, if you're, you know, the person running Brockton and you need to keep, you need to keep your resources for your residents, not for, I mean, that would be a tough conversation. I don't know who would do that.
So it's true that if Brockton only has so much capacity, and rightfully speaking, is that they want to make sure that they have enough future capacity set aside for development in Brockton. And if they sell too much capacity outside of the jurisdiction of Brockton, and therefore they limit their excess capacity, they're going to limit their growth in the city. Understand that fully. So they have to make the calculations as to how much they want to sell. That's why our IMA doesn't touch capacity. It's their decision, not ours. But you're right, is that it falls under basic utility law. It's a utility. You can't just turn somebody off because you no longer want to supply it.
Now, could they say, we're going to stop supply in six months? I mean, do a new supply?
Great surprise, I mean, that would probably.
I'm sorry, do it what?
New supply, if they said, okay, we currently have, I'm making up a number, we currently have 50 customers in West Bridgewater. We believe we have reached the maximum excess capacity that we want to sell outside of our jurisdiction. We will not provide sewer capacity to anybody else in West Bridgewater going forward. Perfectly legal. But to the 50 that have it, they're not gonna be able to just turn off, it's a utility.
Okay.
So do we wanna, David, should we continue with this discussion about the IMA? Do we, do we need to at this point? Is it something we can hand further discussion to our next meeting? Where are you at, what would be best for where the stage you're at right now?
Yeah, so it's been a slow process, because again, there's been turnover in the city solicitor's office. And there's a new city solicitor, and she has a lot to do. And she also has limited staff. So I just want to make sure that everybody listening to this right now is, I'm clear on this. There has been no pushback from Brockton, at least to my knowledge, of any issues with this. The only reason it's taken so long is just because they've been understaffed with changeover. And obviously, we pay our town council, we don't spend a lot of money with town council. It's not the only priority that he has. So with that said, I do not think it's time-sensitive in the sense that it has to be done tonight. But I am going to ask him not to engage the city anymore on this IMA until you tell me as to what IMA you would like to see. If an IMA is going to be broad, so therefore anybody who is currently on the septic system, on the septic line, and would be new development can access it, assuming Brockton wants to sell it to them. That's what we've been putting together. If you want to put limitations on it, I just need you to define those limitations so I can present it to town council, so he can present it to the city. My guess is, the city is going to be fine with that. Again, I'm totally speaking out of school, but this IMA is there in place so we don't have to have 10, 15, 30 different IMAs on an individual basis. I am sure that it's helpful to Brockton, I am positive that it's helpful to West Bridgewater. That was the whole intent of it. And if I may, just because again, I want to be crystal clear on this, this IMA was never, ever, ever conceived for one individual development. It is not a negotiation behalf of one, it is not for one, it was always a global one. It's always been envisioned as a global one. And if you want to put limitations on it, so be it. I just need to know.
Do, do you want to finish this discussion tonight? Or would you prefer to move it into the next meeting, say, have some more time to think about it? I mean, I, we have other items on the agenda.
Well, it sounded like Michelle was gonna come back to us with information.
I don't think so, not, not as far as our decision regarding the type of global IMA we want. That's really our decision.
I'm getting the impression that Michelle believed that an IMA was negotiated, I did to use her words, like, in the dark.
Yeah.
And that's sitting on somebody's desk and nobody's acting on it. That's not accurate. I mean, if, if our council and their council have been trying to put together an IMA, who she is speaking to in Bridgewater, Brockton, I don't know. I mean, I'm sure she's speaking to whoever it is that she has to speak to. There's no secrets to this. There is a resolve that that developer asked the city council to approve. And he made it in this resolve, a resolve is basically a city council telling the mayor, we're in favor of something. And like she said, it's non-binding. And when I saw this resolve, it makes it look like there is an individual IMA specifically for that developer's site. I immediately contacted our legal counsel and I said, you need to make sure that they know we are not signing an individual IMA. I'm on record with the developer personally, one-on-one, individually, and in a group, we are not signing the individual IMA. And so I said, we've got to make sure that they understand it. Why they, he pushed this resolve, why they discussed this resolve, it makes it look like it's specific to him, I don't know. Why they, he pushed this resolve, why they discussed this resolve, it makes it look like it's specific to him, I don't know. Nobody from Brockton has said, hey, can you come up and speak to this? You're more than happy to if they want me to, um, but it is a global IMA. And so, I do not believe, in fact, I know, there is not a document sitting in the mayor's office waiting for his signature. If there is one, I am fully unaware of it, and it can't exist because I don't know about it, you don't know about it, and I can tell you my legal, my legal counsel doesn't know about it either. So, I think Michelle thinks that. That's not the case.
No, I mean, one of the things we could, we could also do, we could continue the discussion. We could postpone it to our next meeting, gather some more information. Maybe reach out to Planning and Zoning Board, see what they think.
Yeah, I think I would like to better understand it. I think I wanna better understand what tie-in means, because in my head, I'm, I'm.
So it, I can, I can help partially answer that question for you. You're not wanting to have as many sewer pipes coming in from the street as you need. Whether you can go with one for an entire building, I don't know. But let's assume you have a, I don't know, ten, uh, an apartment building with ten units in it, and it is one pipe. Does your, does it change if they wanna now put in twenty? What if I, I tell you, they can still use that one tie-in, they don't need another tie-in, just one sufficient. And now they can double the capacity on an existing structure. Or they can change it, I mean, that's the other thing we need to think about too. Okay, it's an existing partial, it's an existing commercial property.
So then they increase the size of the pipe and then there's more capacity.
Now, what if they change? What if they build a, you know, what if it's a forty B? But I mean, there's still some questions out there, and it, it's something that I think that needs to be thought, thought through some more.
I do agree with your thought process, though. I, I'm, I'm on, I'm in line with you in that not just giving it carte blanche to everyone to be able to tie in, that it's only for the existing, um, existing people with access. That it would be for no new developments, so I'm on board with that.
So what would the process be for new developments, apply out, no?
They would do what any other development in West Bridgewater would do, they would put in septic.
So they can never get sewer?
Unless they come in.
I mean, unless something changes in the future, I mean, but they're, they're at no real disadvantage than they are now. Because they, when you build a development in West Bridgewater, you're putting in a septic system. So what's the disadvantage in this approach?
I keep going back and forth, because if we were gonna have a forty B, that would be a great spot for it. Over on North Main Street, I mean, if, I guess if you had to, I'm thinking development-wise, as far as open space and whatnot. Sorry, I know I jumped in when you were about to speak.
No, it's okay. I was just going to ask this. Um, we try to be consistent and fair to everybody. If we're going to have an IMA, and the IMA only addresses existing parcels, fine, I have no issue with that whatsoever. To Anthony's point, somebody has a new development, they're gonna come to see me, I'm gonna tell them no. But if we're going to set up a process that's gonna set me up for failure, oh, just to go to the board and maybe we'll say yes, and we like you because we want a forty B, so yes, but we don't want this one, or we. That sets me up for failure, it's a town up for lawsuit.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because you're gonna have inconsistent and potentially discriminatory practices at that point.
No.
You're gonna have to come to a conclusion. If you wanna do existing only, awesome, we'll run with it. If you wanna open up to everybody, great, we'll run with it. If you wanna be able to say no, we'll say no. I mean, okay with that, we just may have to make sure that it's consistently fair.
Okay, so should we, David, take some time to maybe get some answers as to whether, if we worded existing parcels, does that mean that an existing parcel that is one unit can upgrade to ten units? And it's still considered an existing parcel?
If it's okay, because I don't wanna say the wrong thing.
Okay.
I think the right thing to do is put this on an agenda where town council can come. He can answer some of those questions. Maybe we can even have somebody here that has specific sewer experience to really answer those questions as well. Just keep in mind that if we put in something into the IMA, because that's what we want, Brockton still has to say yes. So we're gonna put in whatever we want, Brockton may push back, we may have to revisit it. But we should put in what we think is what West, West Bridgewater wants. So let me see if I can get some other people here at a future meeting so they can answer those specific questions.
Okay, what's that?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I have one last question. Can Brockton without an IMA still sell sewer if they wanna take that risk and not be able to leave the property?
Yes. That's what they're doing now.
Yeah.
That's why, quite frankly, I was a little frustrated that from Family, literally, Family Dollar came to us hours before they were closing, and they said, we can't close. I was fairly new, this was like twenty-fourteen-ish or something, I was fairly new, and they said, we can't close. And the board at the time, and the board's always been pretty pro-business, and the board's like, well, how can we not allow McDonald's to close? So we weren't getting the maximum tax revenue, how can we allow somebody who wants to develop their business not have access to sewer? I called the city, and the city said, there's been a change, we no longer will allow sewer. I said, the sewer is always there, it's in the building, all you do is turn on the switch. Nope, we're not gonna do it anymore. So we came up with this individual IMA. Um, but they're doing it for everybody else, and the only reason it happened with Family Dollar is because there was a change of ownership. And, and, and again, Michelle is entirely accurate. The remedy from the city of Brockton's standpoint is that if someone doesn't pay, they have to go to court. It is a little bit more laborious, there are some associated costs involved. So I fully understand where Michelle is coming from, and I fully understand where the city is coming from. I get it. Um, but we can't have forty or fifty IMAs, we just can't. We just administrate if it burns up.
So it, it makes sense for the town of West Bridgewater, for our administration as well, that we have one global IMA. It's a matter of, well, how we would like that, how we'd like to see that crafted.
And again, I think we're like eighty-five, ninety percent of the way there.
Yeah.
So I'll bring that final draft IMA, I'll have legal counsel. If we can get somebody here with some sewer experience as well, I, I'll do, do the best I can and be able to answer that specific question. And then you guys will have to say, okay, this is what we're looking to do, and we'll bring it to the city.
Okay, well, do you wanna try to get that on our next agenda, David?
Well, the next one's like before Christmas, so, yeah, so I'm thinking January.
When you can, when you, okay.
Is that okay?
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so, um, as far as under our part of the agenda, we had vote on board of funding, basically a twenty-two budget message. David, wanna talk about that? Thank you.
No, thank you. So, um, but we, we have, we have an expectation, we've already seen it, we have less revenues coming in. And so the board has already, um, provided leadership on this, to ask all of our unions, two unions have already agreed, the other ones have already been notified, is that we would do zero percent for next fiscal year. The fiscal year starts in July first of twenty-twenty-one, that's fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. We've also asked the single vault department heads and all non-union employees. So even department heads and people that answer to you like myself, it's under contract. Um, you have asked us, and we have agreed, myself included, to do a zero percent for next year. Seventy to seventy-five to sometimes eighty percent of our entire budget is payable. So if just about everybody has a zero percent, and the reason I say just about everybody is because if you're in a union, you have steps, you'll receive a step increase if you're in line for it. But you don't receive a cost of living adjustment, that's the zero. So minus those, payable should be pretty flat. Because of what's happening, I think that it's wise, and we're not looking to expand services or offerings. So I think in this case here, it would be wise for us to communicate in our budget message that we would ask them to turn a budget that is level funded. I think it's reasonable to be able to request that. Um, now, there are some budgets that's not going to happen. For example, I administer the retirement budget. That's set from Plymouth County, whatever it is, it is, um, that's gonna go up, we don't have any control. My insurance budget, we're gonna go out, we'll get our bids, whatever that is, is whatever that is. Um, health insurance, health insurance goes up a couple of percent, so twelve percent, that's what it is. But things that we can control, I think it's reasonable for us to have a budget message that would be level funded. So I would, that's what I would ask, if that's acceptable to the board. The process is, is that in the month of December, I send out a message to all department heads. All department heads review their budgets, have to send them back to me by the end of January. And then in February, you meet with everybody, you go through their budgets, finance committee does it as well, you're all familiar with that. Um, and then we go to town meeting at that point, but this is the beginning of that budget cycle.
So I'm in support of a level-funded budget for multitude reasons, but specifically, it's, it's the budget that ends up affecting your taxes. And everyone has needed to tighten their belt through this. And how long it's going to take some of our former working residents to regain their traction and be able to get it back out on the job force, I'm sure. You're impacted by.
Oh, absolutely, our office, our clients, my family, I mean, yeah, we're all impacted.
Right, yeah. So it's, it, and you as well, it's coming in from all directions. So, um, like I said, everyone needs to tighten their belts. We, they, we had decent budgets last year. I, I think they were very, um, I don't wanna say flexible budgets because that infers there was a lot of flexibility built into it, and that wasn't the case. But I don't think there were too many departments that were disappointed in what the recommendations were. And it didn't have a significant impact, so.
Well, I think we should be hiring, or I have the feeling that our, you know, our departments are growing. But I agree that based on the current landscape, we, we have to tighten our belts. I agree with the level service. Did I say that right?
No, level funded.
Level funded, that's the one I meant, the same bottom line.
I agree.
Do we need a vote on that? Okay, so is there a motion to, that's under the.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was just afraid of saying it wrong again.
No, that's okay, that's okay. Um, so David, I think we covered everything on our part of the agenda. Do you wanna finish the town administrator's report?
Um, so, um, we were on B, update here's that funding status. Uh, there's a discussion point at last meeting. Um, and I ballparked, I was asked, I wasn't prepared for the question, but I ballparked, we have about two hundred thousand dollars left. According to the spreadsheet that I put in the package, it's about two hundred twenty-eight thousand. Again, those are, um, those are estimates, because there are still some bills coming in, some of, like, for example, you go out to bid, sometimes those numbers are a little bit different. But we have somewhere around two hundred thousand dollars left, you know, here's that funding. Again, I hate to see us lose that money, because at the end of the year, at least under current federal legislation, if we don't spend it, we are going to lose it. But it was also a balancing act earlier in the year, because we spent eight hundred thousand dollars. It's, it's not like we're not spending money and trying to do the right thing for the town. Is that, I, I always assumed that COVID doesn't disappear on January first. We are going to have expenses after January first. I just, I, I, I didn't expect that the federal government was going to authorize new money, but I assumed that as they saw that it was going to continue into the winter months and into the spring, that there would be legislative change to the initial enabling act that would give us the flexibility to spend it after January first. Now, other municipalities have spent every single dollar, so good for them, they don't lose anything. But that also means that if it gets extended, they have no cushion, they have no additional budget. We do. I'm really hoping that as the lame duck session of Congress continues here in December, I'm hoping that they will at least extend it, or in January, a new administration comes in, they can always retroactively expand it at that point. But to answer the question from last meeting, we have around two hundred thousand dollars left. The departments that have spent it, I provide that spreadsheet so you can see, you can see the bulk of it is spent in the schools. Um, and they're going to continue to have expenses. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to utilize it. And it was one of my motivations not to spend every single dollar providing flexibility when and if that additional legislative, legislative action comes through.
And just to add to that, Meredith, because I did attend the Plymouth County meeting, the Plymouth County officials' meeting last week or the week before, uh, I did ask about other projects they might have done. I didn't really get very much feedback because most of the commentary was, you know, that the town administrators and town managers throughout the county were in contact with each other, talking about, okay, what types of purposes can we use that, use this for? And, you know, some of it's very common, PPE, um, computers for the schools, infrastructure types of things like, you know, internet access and that. Uh, there were a couple others that I thought sounded like great ideas, COVID testing facilities, in-town COVID testing. But these were particularly, I think it was Hanover, um, had started this project, um, having in-town testing over a year ago. So they were already fifty, because they were looking at different types of testing they could do in town. And then along comes COVID. So it increased the need and the use to have in-town testing. So they were able to successfully launch that. It also meant negotiating with their unions because there was union workers administering the tests. So it's, it was more complex than, I mean, in my head, I'm thinking, so we get a van that comes into town, it starts doing test. It was a lot more complex than that, but it was a great idea. Um, one town purchased an ambulance, but they had a significant need for an ambulance because of COVID. They were able to do that. Now, I don't recall if it was that particular town might be challenged or not, but what I was told is that this has not occurred with Plymouth County, but it has occurred with some communities where it was the state, um, handling the funding, that they were approved for a particular project or item, and now they're being asked to return the money. So the way Plymouth County has handled this, I have to give them, um, a lot of credit for what they have done. It, it's been, from what I've seen, a very fair and fluid process. They did mention that as it stands right now, just like David said, at the end of the year, this is supposed to go away. Um, they, they would like to see that money not go away, and, you know, if need be, if they could, um, administer it to another community that used up all their funds, they don't have the ability to do that right now. So there is an extension, there's a bill cross, um, a bill submitted to extend the COVID funding time. I, I mean, it's a countdown right now. Given what's happening with the numbers, I would say it's probably more likely than not an extension will occur, so.
Do you think there'll be more money?
Happen, depends on what happens in Georgia.
Good point.
That's, that's really where I think it comes down to.
Yeah, that's true, I can see that.
Okay.
Okay, um, the next one I placed on the agenda, I will ask you to, you know, take it under advisement, we're not looking for a vote tonight. Uh, the thirty-second explanation of this is, is that over the summer, there was a private filming company that came to a handful of surrounding towns, they were shooting a movie. And as you alluded to earlier, my counterparts, and I speak all the time, and in some towns, they went in, they wanted to shoot a movie, and they had no process, no permitting process, they didn't know what to do. And, you know, these companies are used to having a permitting process, could say, I understand it. So the truth of the matter is, is that I'm on the phone, or actually, there's a Zoom call, but I was on the call, and I'm saying, what do we need to permit for? But as you go through it, you realize that in all these movies, they may shoot off fireworks, they may have gunfire, they may have high-speed, um, car changes, all of those things. Should we have police detail, should we have EMS people there? Our residents look out the window and see someone shot and call nine-one-one, but turns out, it's actually a movie studio. So, um, I would say, wow, you know, this does make a lot of sense. So what I do is I cobble together the best portions of what I thought from a bunch of other towns. The South Shore towns, specifically Marshfield and Duckbury, they have a lot of experience with this. So I put their policies together, created one, I then forwarded out to all of the department heads in town. Uh, again, Lauren and Linda greatly assisted with this, and that way they reviewed it, so I made sure that we would capture what they were looking for. So now we have a finished product. It's, we have no company looking to film in West Bridgewater. I better say that, that's correct, I better say that.
Not yet, not yet.
But you know what, one day it may happen. So I think it's wise for us to have a policy in the process, that's all.
Looking for us to review that back to you at some point?
Yeah. Exactly, I'll place it on the agenda, say in a month or so, and we can review it at that point. The next one's really, I'll just batch if it's okay. I wanna say credit, you know, we really do have an excellent police department. Um, Rick Flaherty does an excellent job, we discussed with him earlier. Uh, his department, uh, he tasked his lieutenant, Tim Nixon, he applied for a federal grant, received twenty-five thousand dollars. We discussed online permitting. We had discussed online permitting using CARES Act's funding to be able to do it, but I didn't want to just consume all those funds. So there was a grant at the state, we applied for that, we received it, forty-five thousand five hundred dollars, so we can now do, or build an online permitting platform. For our building department, so we're in the process of doing that, so again, it saves the money from the CARES Act. Hopefully that we can use for something else. My grant is our insurance company, our DPW, applied for that, received about ten thousand dollars in items that would normally come out of his local budget. So again, these are items that you will have to replenish in years future, but again, it saves the local town ten thousand dollars. You know, I think the police department and the DPW received deserve credit for chasing those grants and not just relying on their local budgets. And unfortunately, those are all the good awards that we received. It's sad for me to say publicly, but we did not receive the Mass Works Grant, which was the purpose of us going to town meeting in June. Rezone Lincoln Street, hoping to be able to receive between three to four million dollars to rework one oh six, add a set of lights. And line up Crescent Street and Lincoln, it did not come through. I had a meeting this morning at eight o'clock with the developer, we're gonna start to look at other avenues. I'll bring those back to the board, whatever those might be, but at this point, um, we did not receive that grant.
Disappointing?
It was, we, quite frankly, we did a lot of work on it, and we did a lot of work behind the scenes to try to, but it didn't happen.
Is there a conversation going on with the, um, developers on Lincoln Street to maybe come up with a, an alternative?
Yes. I, I can't say it anymore, you know, I, I, I don't have, I don't have more answers, I'm still soliciting some information.
All right, so if there aren't any more questions or discussion to be had. I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session. For purposes of conducting a strategy, strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Specifically hiring a new fire chief and conducting strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Specifically all non-union contractual employees under the direction of the Board of Selectmen, this would need to be a roll call vote.
Kenny Anderson?
Anderson, yes.
Raise yes. So at this point, we will adjourn open session.